Hi, how are you?
Hey Mayor, how are you?
Doing well, how about you?
Great, thank you so much. So good afternoon to you and good afternoon to the panelists and good afternoon Miami Dade County. We are on Facebook Live, we are on Twitter Live, we already have a lot of your questions ready to go for just a little bit later. But in the meantime, you can also comment and ask questions and we will get as many of those questions to the mayor and to the panelists as we move forward with today's virtual town hall. To the panelists, welcome and please keep your devices muted unless you are speaking and that way everybody can hear clearly what is being said. Mayor, out to you.
Thank you Patty and good afternoon everybody and thanks for joining us in our moving to a new normal town hall today. I want to hear from our residents as we start looking at what outdoor activities that we can open up here in Miami Dade. We've had several meetings with medical experts from Jackson Health, UHealth, the University of Miami, and the FIU Medical School as well as the Florida Department of Health. They've been involved in the Open Spaces Working Group. They have given us very valuable advice based on the most recent CDC guidelines and their own medical experience during this pandemic. Our medical experts included Dr. Lilian Abo, an infectious disease specialist at UHealth, Dr. Tanira Fereida, Chief Medical Officer at UHealth, Dr. Aaron Kovitz, Director for the Health Equity and Sylvester Comprehensive Cancer Center, and the researcher who is overseeing our county's random study on COVID-19 infections, Dr. Eileen Marty, an infectious disease expert at Florida International University Medical School, Jackson Health System President and CEO Carlos Migoya, Dr. Dipin Parek, the Chief Medical Clinical Officer at the University of Miami Health System, and from the Florida Department of Health, we have heard from Dr. Lilian Rivera, who came back from retirement to help us during this COVID-19 crisis, and Dr. Yessenia Yalta, the Administrator for the Florida Department of Health here in Miami Dade County. Doctors agree that open air activities are good for the people's physical and mental health. They're also finding that obesity is contributing to the mortality rate of COVID-19 patients, so we would like for people to get some fresh air and sunshine, but do it in the right way. I want to thank all of our medical experts for helping us work through what's possible to open up. Each opening will require people to follow emergency orders on social distancing and wearing coverings over their mouth and nose during certain types of activities. Plus, no more than 10 people will be allowed to gather in any confined areas, whether it's on a boat or in a park. Also, for senior citizens and anyone at any age with certain medical conditions, the CDC recommends that they wear a mask if they go outside. These conditions include immune system problems, diabetes, and heart and lung disease. Before we get into all the details of our new normal initiative, I want to make it clear that any openings will be met with zero tolerance for those who break the rules on social distancing or we find 10 or more people clustered in any area. That means Miami Dade Police, along with local police departments, the US Coast Guard, Florida Fish and Wildlife Officers, will be cracking down on anyone not following social distancing and other rules. Whether people are at parks, golfing, or taking out a boat, or canoe, or jet ski on the water, the rules will apply, no exceptions. We don't want a few lawbreakers to hurt the ability of the vast majority in our community who are following the health guidelines to enjoy the outdoors. Deputy Mayor Maurice Kemp and Miami Dade Police Director Alfredo Ramirez have been working with our local, state, and federal partners on the enforcement aspect of any openings for parks, marinas, boating, and golf. I have heard from a lot of people who are ready for us to open up outdoor activities, others are concerned we could be opening up too soon. Again, I want to stress that any opening will be done with medical experts guiding us every step of the way. We will not open up any activities if it goes against medical advice, period. For instance, no contact groups sports such as basketball, baseball, soccer, and football will be allowed under the first phase of openings. But you may be able to use a basketball court or a soccer field to practice with your own ball just by yourself. Gyms will continue to be closed because that equipment would be shared and that could spread the virus. Opening our beaches is also not in the works at this time, although we do have recommendations on that. This decision was made in conjunction with the county's coastal communities. At each step, we are consulting with all the stakeholders because we want to make sure that any opening is enforceable. Before we open any beaches, we want to see how our people follow the rules for other openings at parks, golf courses, and marinas. Yesterday, I held a virtual meeting with leaders of our county's coastal communities, the League of Cities, and the county managers and mayors of Broward, Monroe, and Palm Beach. In each one of those meetings, we discuss how we can have a regional approach whenever possible. Now for the details, I want each of the subgroups to share their findings with you, then we will open up to questions. We will start with Miami Dade Parks Director Maria Nardi, who headed the Parks Group and will report their recommendations. Next will be the Waterways and Boating. That group is headed by Rodney Buretto, who is a member of the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. He will be followed by Charles DeLuca, President and Executive Director of the First Tee at Nautilus Golf Course, who will share that group's recommendations for public and private golf courses. We will end with a short summary on the beaches headed by Ramiro Iguanzo, the President of the Miami Dade City and County Managers Association. So now, let's start with Director Nardi. Maria, please give your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank first the community leaders and the health professionals in the Park Work Group Committee for your valuable participation in this process. Thank you. The results of the work group is that we will begin with a safe, responsible strategies for individual family park access, gradually moving toward a full recreation of sports programming in three phases. Protecting citizens is of the utmost importance, as is, of course, park employees always following CDC and State Department guidelines. Phase one, we will be opening community and neighborhood parks from sunrise to sunset, encouraging parks to be used in short-term intervals, one to two hours, individually and family passive and limited active use only, once again, following our CDC guidelines. For safe, responsible, and family, individual and family activities, passive and limited activities, what we're talking about is walking, jogging, hiking, cycling, nature walks on trails, and quiet enjoyment of the outdoors. Specifically to the limited active use of parks, what we're talking about individual basketball play only, tennis singles play only, racquetball individual play only. We're talking about walking and nature paths will be one-way directional, one-way only, with walkers using face masks following CDC guidelines. We will be opening up Deering Estate, the grounds, not the facilities, not the buildings, Fruit and Spice Park, Trail Glades Range. We will have, depending once again on all of our available resources, we will be opening up restrooms. Restrooms will be open. We will open basketball courts, once again, for individual play. Team or pickup games will be prohibited. Only three players per half-court. You must bring your own basketball, no shared use of your basketball. Open tennis courts for single-play only. We will open racquetball courts for individual play only. Competitive games will be prohibited. No recreational programming at this time. Pickup games, organized sports, or activities will be allowed. No groups of 10 or more will be allowed in parks. Smaller groups must maintain social distancing. And I want to share with you the amenities that will remain closed. Playgrounds and exercise equipments within those parks will remain closed. Dog parks, recreational buildings, picnic shelters, playfields, gyms, campgrounds, skate parks, swimming pools, and all sports field lighting will remain off. Seniors can use parks anytime and will have priority and access at dedicated parks two hours early in the morning, three times a week. We will have police, park rangers, roving park teams to monitor our parks, providing all and following all CDC health line of protective measures themselves. We will also continue our virtual recreation programming that has begun in some areas of the county, meaning in municipalities. I know many of them have that active, as we do also in Miami Dade County. And we will take extra measures to keep our facilities clean and sanitized. We will be providing signage and communication plan that will be adapted for each phase and that will be, of course, in coordination with all of our communication teams to make sure that we have a coordinated message. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we can't hear you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted? Somebody muted me, okay. Thank you Maria. And now Rodney Buretto will share his work group's recommendations on the use of the waterway.
Thank you Mayor Jimenez. Good afternoon, my fellow Miami Dade County citizens. Our committee recommendation for boating and opening up the public marina is as follows. On-water activity, there will be no anchoring and you must be 50 feet apart for at all times. I apologize. You can anchor, but you need to be 50 feet apart at all times. No tying up at still-still. No gathering of more than 10 people. Rafting up of boats is prohibited. Beaching of boats is prohibited. Landings are prohibited. Capacity of boats, for 25-foot or less, you have four adults plus children. 26 to 36-foot boats is six adults plus children. Boats larger than 37 feet can be eight adults plus children. Jet ski rentals and operations will only allow single riders and jet skis and they must follow CDC guidelines regarding sanitation for the jet skis. Charter vessels, a six-pack vessel must adhere to no more than four guests per vessel and follow CDC guidelines. Drip boats or headboats, and these are the boats that carry, you know, 25-plus fishermen on it, will be dealt with by the Parks Department and the separate guidelines from them. Kayaks and canoes, kayaks and canoe launches will, areas will be reopened. Boat ramp protocol, ramps will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. One boat per launch area at any one time. Upon returning to the dock, once the boat is loaded, all the passengers will exit, enter their vehicles, and exit the launch area at one time. Fish cleaning stations, one person per station at any one time. Proper cleaning and sanitation process should always be practiced. Social distancing per CDC guidelines must be adhered to. Fishing piers, social distancing and minimum of 10 feet between fishermen must be followed. Public restrooms in ship stores, access to public restrooms will be available. Safe protocol in accordance to CDC guidelines must be followed. Entering the ship store or bait or tackle store is required to practice social distancing and utilize personal protection equipment in accordance to CDC guidelines. Bait suppliers and boat repair shops will be addressed in a separate order from the mayor's office. Communications, the communication of all the new rules and regulations, whether there will be a media blitz using social media, PSA, radio, TV, and then both English and in Spanish. Our federal, state, and county city law enforcement will have zero tolerance plan to place, to place in, in place to enforce the new rules. Mr. Mayor, that would be the report from us.
Thank you Rodney. Now Charles DeLuca will give us the recommendations of golf course.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to say it's been a pleasure to serve with my fellow members of the Golf Course Task Force in developing the plan to facilitate the reopening of golf courses. Everybody's worked very hard. We represent over 14 golf courses in Dade County alone. In every trying situation, one must always look for a silver lining. In this case, where golf courses throughout the state of Florida were able to continue to operate during the COVID-19 pandemic, it was necessary to close the golf courses in our three counties because of the prevalence of the outbreak in South Florida. The silver lining for us was that we were able to study the recommendations provided by the National Golf Course Owners Association, PGA of America, United States Golf Association, and how best to provide a safe environment on South Florida golf courses due to COVID-19, as well as the input from mayors, elected officials, city managers, medical experts, and golf course operators throughout the state. This guided development of our comprehensive plan to safely reopen the golf courses in Miami Dade and help advise Broward and Palm Beach County golf courses. Our five-point detailed plan covers all key areas involved in safety and successfully operating a golf course in today's environment. First, we start with how one treats the on-course facility when someone arrives at a golf course and prepares to play. Second, it covers how the golf course itself must be modified and prepared. Third, it instructs how players must modify their game and behavior on a golf course. Fourth, the serving of food and beverage guidelines on and off the course are covered. Fifth, and finally, the all-important preparation and training of staff is covered in detail. All of our points are in accordance to CDC guidelines and social distancing. Under this plan, golf offers the ability to adhere to social distancing guidelines while providing our citizens one more important activity to help reduce the strain and isolation necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. It gets people back to work in a safe and controlled environment. Finally, I would like to once again thank all the mayors, elected officials, city managers across the Chark County area for their input and feedback. We all realize the importance of this being a timely and coordinated effort across all municipalities.
Charles, can you give us a little bit more detail?
Absolutely, sir. You know, it covers everything, sir. It covers from the moment you arrive to the golf course, the fact that nobody will be allowed to touch anybody else's equipment. It goes into great detail on how the golf course clubhouses are set up, one-way direction in and out, if not registers. The ability to register to accept payment from golfers will be outside of glass barriers. If not, it'll be the same requirements that are required to go in and out of any other type store, masks, gloves, everything else needed. It talks about the sanitation of the golf course equipment. Talks about how there will only be one person per cart, whether or not they're a married couple using their own golf cart. Everybody's going to be allowed one. If not, they'll be asked to walk. That keeps the very safe social distancing in golf. Talks about the fact that pins will not be removed, the holes will be filled with foam, or the cups will be turned upside down, keeping an inch and a half, which is a USGA recommendation now, so that nobody else all reaching into the hole or touching anything. Discusses the parameters on serving food and beverage on a golf course, how things must be left six feet away from the clients, opposite side of the golf course from clients, making sure nobody touches interacts with anybody in the six-feet environment. Goes into golf course preparations as far as no rakes on the golf courses. The USGA across the entire country has changed the rules of golf for this because we believe it's going to last a while. There are no rakes on the golf course. There's no stand on the golf course. You're basically going to rake the ground with your feet because they don't want anything shared. There will be not courses of all weighed in. We know there'll be nobody picking up people's clubs, dropping people off at the end of the round. It goes into the detail of when the golf, sit around stations. There's no way of washing your golf balls. It has a complete rule sheet that's going to be put on every golf cart on how people are conducted, how everything's got to be touched, not touched, cleaned. And it goes into high detail on how we have to train our staff. It gets very intensive. I think it'll be made available. Everybody out there is going to see it. I think if I sat and read it, you guys would be bored out of your mind.
Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mayor, you're muted again. Mayor, you're in and out of mute for some reason, but, okay, there's Ramiro on beaches is what the mayor said in case anybody missed it. Go ahead, Ramiro.
Thank you Patty and thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor alluded to in his opening comments, a lot of time was spent discussing the reopening of the beaches. And as he also mentioned, unlike parks, marinas, and golf courses, even though there are some initial recommendations in place that we'll go over shortly, the recommendation at this time is that the beaches do not open at the same time as parks, golf courses, and marinas. This feedback and the input was gathered by many stakeholders. The mayor mentioned that he spent a lot of time speaking to all the mayors and managers of all the coastal cities in Miami Dade County, including Key Biscayne, Miami Beach, Surfside, Bow Harbor Village, Sunny Isles Beach, Golden Beach, Aventura, North Miami Beach, Bay Harbor Islands, Indian Creek, and North Bay Village. In addition, discussions were also had and input was solicited from the county administrators of Broward, Monroe, and West Palm Beach counties. And in addition, input was also solicited from several city managers for coastal cities in Broward County, including Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, Hollendale Beach, Dana Beach, and Pompano Beach. So the initial recommendations are that the opening of the beaches should be phased and a coordinated effort in Miami Dade County and should occur at the same time for all beaches in all cities in Miami Dade County, including Miami Beach, Surfside, Bow Harbor Village, Sunny Isles, Golden Beach, and Key Biscayne, as well as all the county beaches, including in Holloway, Virginia Key, and Cranham Park. The opening of the beaches in Miami Dade County should also be done in conjunction with the beaches in Broward County, with West Palm Beach County, and with Monroe County as well. Recommended activities that are being on the beach. All activities should be passive in nature and adhering to all CDC recommended social distancing guidelines. Permitted activities include walking and jogging on the sand and on the seashore and maintaining proper distance between people from different households. They recommend a distance of at least six feet apart from others, but ideally up to 15 feet apart. Activities not permitted, any organized activities or athletics involving groups of any size, gatherings of 10 or more people from different households, gatherings that do not adhere to social distancing guidelines, any furnishing, beach chairs, beach equipment. No concession-style seating, including beach chairs provided by residential buildings, hotels. No sunbathing or sitting on individually-owned beach chairs and/or beach towels. As sedentary beachgoers who may be using these type of beach equipment could be in the way of those that are doing exercise, jogging, and walking, which are the recommended activities. Swimming was discussed. At this time, based on the consultation with medical professions, swimming is not yet advised. This is being continuously discussed to determine when swimming should be permitted when the beach is reopened. The reopening of the beaches should be on a weekday, easing into a weekend. And key is the enforcement. Enforcement of these recommended permitted activities is a major concern and would need thoughtful consideration from all beach cities and the county to ensure proper enforcement. And based on these enforcement concerns, the recommendation for the beaches not to reopen at this time.
Thank you, Ramiro. Now I want to stress that we are looking at phasing in all the openings based on what the medical experts say is appropriate to contain the virus. We are seeing a light at the end of this tunnel and the number of hospitalizations remaining steady. So our stay safer at home order and the rules on social distancing and face coverings, we believe are making a difference. We're continuing those rules at every step until the medical experts say otherwise. I'm honored to have been named by Governor DeSantis on the Executive Committee of the Governors Reopen Florida Task Force today. Just a couple hours ago, I participated in that first meeting. We are not out of the woods and, but I am encouraged that we are, looks like we may be tamping down the COVID curve. That's why I continue to stress that everyone should act as if they have the virus and practice social distancing when outside and also remember that we are all safer at home. Whether it's opening parks or starting to open some businesses that are now closed, the medical evidence will guide us in any and all the decisions that we make. Thank you. And now Patty Brill from my communications office will be sharing the questions I have received on Facebook Live and on Twitter. Now we'll, we'll take questions. What do you got Patty?
Okay, we have our first question from Mercedes Gonzalez-Budahen. And she says, "How will any of this be enforced when before everyone went to the sandbars to have fun? Pictures all over Facebook to prove it. The behavior made you close the ramps and the marinas. What's the difference now?"
Difference is that, the difference is that we learned from that experience. And before we undertake to open up the waterways, what you're talking about in particular, we will have the enforcement agencies out there and there is zero tolerance. We allowed, I guess, sandbars as long as they were in social distancing. There is no beaching on sandbars. There is no rafting or no tying up. You can't have any landings. You also have a, a limit on the number of people you can have on a boat, depending on the size. We're going to have air assets up so that they will guide the, our water assets to the violators. The violators, we have zero tolerance. What does that mean? It means that you're going to be fined and the fine could be $500 or you are subject to arrest. So, you know, the message is, we want good, law-abiding citizens to go out and enjoy the water in a safe manner. Those that want to break the law or break the rules, you're going to be treated differently. And, and we're not kidding. And we're not messing around and we're going to be enforcing this. So there's no, there's no, hey, did you hear? No. If you go out on the water, you better know the rules. We're going to be posting the rules on all the marinas, all the launch points. You better know the rules. We'll have people there as you're launching your boat telling you what the rules are. And if you have too many people, I'm sorry, you can't put those people on the boat. And, and so this is going to be zero tolerance from the get-go on the, on the water. And by the way, it's going to be zero tolerance on everything. And because again, we can't let a handful of folks that just don't want to follow the rules ruin it for the rest of us. And we're not going to allow that.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next question is from Cynthia Boni-Cordioli. She left a previous Facebook message. She is asking a question about public spaces. Well, not a question, but more of a comment saying, "Please open external areas of apartment buildings," so referring to the amenities being closed down. "Families with kids need a place to take their children outdoors. It is essential for our immunity to get fresh air and exercise." "The external areas of buildings closed only force people to go into the streets to get this and be in contact with more people." What can we say to her?
That's something a little bit more complicated because a lot of those areas aren't quite that open. And you could end up with a lot of people congregating into a supposedly open area, but it's a very small open area. We're not looking at opening up pools. We're not, certainly not looking at opening up gyms. Green spaces that are outdoors, you can go out there now anyway. And so, right now, it's not something that we looked at. We looked at the bigger picture. And if we want, we need to, we'll, we'll focus in on that area. But at this point, I'd rather just focus in on the much larger open spaces where a lot more people can take advantage of it.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a lot of questions on beaches, so I'm going to consolidate a little, a few of them together. Someone saying, "Open beaches for walking and exercise during limited hours, 6:30 AM to 10:00 AM. It would greatly increase an opportunity for residents to keep their immunity up and those aren't party hours." There's someone else asking for the same thing, reopen beaches in places where it's not dangerous. And then we have this comment from Wendy Blair Stefan, who says, "What's to keep what happened in Jacksonville Beach from happening here? Boards of people on the beaches, no space, no masks. I'm not sure we have the manpower to make people use their heads. If even the parks open up, the boat ramps are probably manageable," she says.
Well, in terms of the beaches, that's exactly why we're not opening beaches. It's an enforcement issue. Look, if the beaches were something like, like the Miami Dade County beach we have at Cranham Park, that's manageable because we can always close off the, the entry point. So you close off the Rickenbacker or you close off the parking lots and then you can manage the number of people that actually go there. It's not the same on the coastal cities. You have over seven miles of wide open with multiple entry points. It's almost impossible to, to really to, to manage it and to enforce it. And so that's why the beaches are coming later. Coming later, when people understand the rules and people have, you know, abide by the rules. And then when we have enough personnel to actually enforce what we want to do on the beaches. And, and again, that's, that's not in the works right now, opening the beaches. And we, this is in consultation with both Palm Beach and Broward and Monroe and also all the coastal cities here in Miami Dade. None of them felt that it was the right thing to do. Only one really felt it was okay in this minor stretch of beach and they're, and they're for a specific purpose. But that's, we could, that means that everybody in Dade County go to that beach. There's no way you can do that. So, you know, for right now, they're going to, they're going to remain closed.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we did have also a lot of questions come in from folks wanting those golf courses open. We have this question from Herman Klemic. He says, "Why can't we open the golf courses and the tennis courts if they practice social distancing? Walking, one person per cart, food and beverage takeout only, pay online, retail in-shop closed." "Beaches being open and maybe having police traffic personnel enforcing social distancing on the beaches," he comments as well.
Well, as far as tennis and golf, I agree. You know, we, there is no reason right now that I know of. I mean, I have talked to my, to the medical experts that are here. Maybe they can answer the question. But I believe that you can. With the recommendations that were given by the golf committee, I thought that they were very good recommendations. And I think that the chance of infection is going to be very, very low. And I think that the chance of infection is going to be very, very low. Tennis, the same thing, as long as you play singles. I believe that the risk and infection is very, very low. And we have the manpower, we have the staffing to be able to enforce that. Because there are a limited number of golf courses in this town. And and I believe, you know, you can have one eyes, one set of eyes on a number of courts at the same time. Pretty easy to know when somebody's playing doubles, say, hey, you can't do that. You know, you can only play singles. And so, you know, if any, any of the medical expert for the beaches, no, we're still no on the beaches. Any of the medical folks want to chime in on that on that question?
Yeah, this is Eileen Marty. Hi, hi, Mayor. Yeah. I think there's been a tremendous amount of discussion on the details. And I think Mayor Jimenez and his team have paid enormous attention to how to keep people properly social distanced in those specific circumstances. And golf is a circumstance with the right rules and the right ways of doing it that if people behave themselves, it should be fine, minimal risk scientifically. And it all boils down to people abiding by the rules. Same with tennis.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Okay, so our next question comes from concerned parents. And they're asking, what are the chances summer camps will be open in the summer for the kids? And I know that's a big concern if school is out and parents are eventually able to start going back to work. What do we do with our kids?
I don't have an answer for that right now. I can't. I can't say yes, can't say no. Really, a lot of it depends on on how this virus progresses. And and how how can we make that activity safe? And so we'll have to focus on that in the in the near future. And if we can find a safe way to do it, then yes. But, you know, the superintendent has already canceled school for the rest of the year. There's a reason for that because kids tend to kind of group up together. And if one of them becomes active and transmits then transmits to a whole bunch of other kids who then take it to the house and take it to their parents and their grandparents. It's a little bit more problematic. And so, you know, I the things that we can do separate from each other, you know, with social distancing and activities that really have low risk, we're going to concentrate on that first. Higher risk activities are going to take a little longer. Like case in point, large, large groups of people, that's probably not going to come for a long time, you know, out. Because that's a that's a very, very risky proposition. The odds are you're going to come in contact with somebody who's active and then you're really going to be spreading that that virus. So what we were looking at right now are places where people can separate easy outdoors, in the in the sunshine, fresh air, get some exercise, but keep away from each other.
Thank you, Mayor. We also have our media members on Twitter and Facebook asking some questions. We have a question from Doug Hanks specifically to Dr. Abbo. Doug Hanks from the Miami Herald. He says, Dr. Abbo, do you have any concerns about the recommendations for lifting restrictions on parks and open spaces? And if not, why do you think this is a safe thing to do? Dr. Abbo?
Thank you. We have all collaborated and the mayor and his team have absolutely taken into consideration our feedback. We have all agreed that as long as these recommendations are enforced and monitored, it's safe to proceed. The only thing I would add that also should be added into commercial stores like supermarkets as well as parks, we should have a one way route. So people should not be coming, you know, closing ways to face each other. Everyone should be walking into with arrows like in one direction. And that way we can ensure that we minimize and we maintain, we minimize contact and we maintain the six feet distance. We all agreed that considering the temperature, the environment and the need for open, open spaces, this was a safe measure and and we have all collaborated in this decision. And also I think it's important to understand that if we are not following these rules, these measures will be again taken away. So there will be enforcement and there will be restrictions again if people are not following the behaviors, the hand hygiene, the use of the mask and the six feet social distancing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Abbo.
Thank you, Doctor, and and I'll probably put the one way, one way order tonight. That's a great idea, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And in that same vein, I have a question from Twitter user Yuli Melendez, who says, it seems clear that reopening will increase transmission of the virus. How will this be managed and at which threshold will the decision to reclose be made if necessary?
Well, we'll all be we'll all be monitoring what's going on at the hospital and how many patients are coming into the hospital. And that's monitored every day. And if we find that somehow this there's some kind of an uptick in the number of infections, all none of this is written in stone. It's all written on paper. It can be rescinded. Look, I we allowed people to go out on the water one day, right? And and then the next day, because of the behaviors, we had to close it down. Dr. Abbo is absolutely correct. This will be done with strict enforcement. And it's going to be done with strict enforcement because we want to, we want to, we want to reward good behavior. We don't want to reward bad behavior. But also, even though what we did with the with the with the water and the waterways is I'm sure that if you looked at it, probably a majority of the people were following the rules. There were so many that weren't following the rules. So we have to put out that word, hey, there is no tolerance here. We will have the assets out there to enforce these rules. And if you don't follow them, it's going to cost you. It's going to cost you in monetarily with a $500 fine. It may cost you with even more. I mean, if you you may find yourself, you know, looking at a little bit of jail time, right? It's not something we want to do. But we have to so that we the message is out. We're serious. We're serious about this and and we won't want, we don't want to let you spoil it for the rest of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have this question. Any plan to reopen gyms? Might be to limit the people who can visit the gym, make masks mandatory, temperature checks? I think some of the CrossFit owners, says Mahesh Dasari on Twitter, are being hit very hard financially, so the sooner they get opened up, the better.
The problem with gyms is that it's a it's a use of the same equipment. And it's use of the same equipment. And when you're in a gym, you're obviously sweating. So there is a high degree of spreading that that virus from one user to another. And you can say, yeah, well, you can disinfect and the whole thing. But that's a very high risk behavior right now. And so, no, we're not looking at opening gyms.
Okay. Evelyn Legoria says on Twitter, Mayor, my daughter worked at a park. When schools were closed, the parks became congested. I have my mother and grandmother immunocompromised or at high risk. Parks will just be a place where kids leave the house to be watched by park leaders for just with disregard for social distancing. That's her concern.
Well, let me say that. Let me say that that's a concern. You're right. But again, we're going to have additional assets in the parks. We're not going to have any programming in parks, all right? So the kids have to stay apart. And so we're going to have additional people in the parks to make sure that the kids stay apart. And no more group, groups of no more than 10. But even when they have less than 10, they have to maintain social distancing. If they're walking around, they have to have a mask. And so, you know, a park is not going to be a place where you're going to have parties. We're not going to allow it because it's all based on the kind of enforcement that we're going to have at these parks. And I've already, you know, told the parks director, she's going to have additional assets to enforce this. And folks that do not adhere to it, no matter what their age, will be asked to leave the park or they may be fined. Okay? And so, again, we're serious about these measures. We are going to have strict enforcement of these.
Mayor Roxana Romero on Facebook says, if our very own Dr. Marty, FIU's world renowned epidemiologist, says we haven't hit the peak yet and now would be unwise to open up, why, Mr. Mayor, would you even consider opening up the county? I live in Coral Gables and the majority of people in my neighborhood don't even wear a mask while exercising.
Well, it they don't have to wear a mask as long as they separate from from their fellow neighbors. I've I've been been around Coral Gables. Matter of fact, Coral Gables is right across street from my house. I don't see too many people walking around. And and the ones that I do see walking around are really far, spread out pretty well. I know that there's one area, I think, around the Granada Golf Course where I've seen some people walking around. But even there, they're walking around, they're pretty far away from each other. Or they're they're a family group and you can tell that they're a family. And so why are we looking at opening things up? We're looking at opening up open spaces. That's what we're looking at right now. The things that will have the least amount of risk involved with spreading the disease. And what we really want to do is want to make sure that we reduce the risk of spreading the disease. But it's never going to get down to zero. What we also have to do is make sure that we protect our elderly. And the message to the elderly is the elderly need to go out, you know, as least as possible. They need to stay at home as much as possible. We need to kind of segregate them as much as possible. We need to feed them at home. That's why we already, we've provided over a million and a half meals to the elderly at their home so that they stay there more. And the elderly, you know, I look, I'm one of them. I'm 66, right? And so I have to also alter my behavior. I would love to go and hug my grandchildren. I have six of them. I haven't hugged my grandchildren in about two months. I may not be able to hug my grandchildren for a while, right? But it's up to me, change my my personal behavior too, right? But people need to start to go out. People need to, we need to start looking at when we can get to a new normal. Because frankly, we can't sustain this path that we're on as a county, as a state or as a country. And so outdoor activities, this first phase, I think, is very low risk as long as we enforce the rules, which we are going to enforce the rules.
FX Harry One on Twitter says, also, will parks and tourist attractions with open spaces but high attendance be kept closed until more restrictions can be lifted beyond open spaces or a phase one? He refers to places like South Beach, the Miami Seaquarium, Zoo Miami, Monkey Jungle, Matheson Hammock, et cetera.
No, they're those the 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 parks will be open, all right, for those activities which we say are okay. And you must maintain social distancing, et cetera. You must wear a mask. You must go in the same direction, all of that, all right? No, but other tourist attractions, we don't expect that to be open. We don't want anywhere where you have a large number of people. Large crowds are something that we do not want. We can always control access to the parks. We can always limit the access to the parks by closing the parking lots. We can start to thin out the parks. And we're not going to have a throng of people all show up at one park. We will close that off and have people leave the park to make sure that we have social distancing. Some of these parks are about 200 acres. They can hold a lot of people there and they can maintain their their social distancing. So again, it's going to be enforced and it'll be enforced strictly. And then our park people will have the ability to ask people to leave. They will have the ability to also close off the parking lots so that only a certain number of cars are allowed there to to enjoy the park.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few questions that are kind of similar. One came in in advance and a lot of people on Facebook are asking similar things. They are saying the different phases of reopening seem vague. What exactly will reopen in phase one? Please give examples. Mr. Pinzon on Facebook just asked, when will these reopenings take place?
Oh, we will reopen as soon as I after this, we'll talk to our medical personnel and say, okay, when will be safe to do these things? It's not vague, really. We we tell you exactly what's opening up right now and how it's going to be open. All you have to do is read the orders, okay? And once they're once they're out there, they'll tell you exactly how it's going to get done. Phase two and three, we'll we'll work on phase two. We I know we have a phase two plan for the the parks, but that has to be refined also. Phase three has to be refined. And then the the next thing that I will be putting together, I'll be putting together like an interior space working group on how to open up things such as restaurants and shops and and that kind of thing, maybe, you know, attractions such as the zoo, maybe, I don't know. But that's a separate group. And that's a much more detailed kind of discussion because different kinds of occupancies have their own sets of issues. And again, nothing will be done without consulting our medical experts on how and when we should be doing these.
Magda Salazar Wallace also on Facebook says, how can you guarantee that what you put in place will be followed? Another enforcement question. There are so many people right now doing whatever they please with no consequences, no respect for authority. How can you check that everyone who, oh, how can you test everyone who is willing to be tested as part of the study as well as to start contract tracing? Okay, that's two separate questions. She wants to know how we're going to be able to enforce everything that we put in place. And then she wants to know how we can test, I I guess, more people, that community wide testing that we all hear about that would make things so much easier.
Well, the look, we don't have, we don't, I'm going to ask you a second question first. We don't have 2.8 million tests. And so right now, we're we're doing a representative sample, a random sample of the community. Tomorrow, we'll have our second week of it. And and then we'll be able to publish some of the the initial results of that, some of which are, there's some interesting data from the first week. But again, it's incomplete, so we have to get the second week. And and then from there, we'll we'll publish those results. I would think that you're going to see that there's a lot of a lot of people in Miami-Dade County that have that are testing positive to the antibody that never, never had a, never had a symptom. And so what we've been saying all along, that you have to assume that everybody has the virus, is true. And that we have to change our behavior. Now, how am I going to assure that every, every, you know, that everybody's following the rules? Well, there's strict enforcement. Am I going to assure that everybody and that somebody doesn't get away with it? Absolutely not. You know, people speed on the on the road every day. We don't catch every speeder. But in this case, you know, we're going to be focusing in on certain things and especially on the parks, especially on the waterways, on the golf courses. And those that are not following the rules will be dealt with. They will be asked to leave or they will be given a fine or there will be, you know, in certain cases, they could even face arrest. You know, depends. That's the discretion of the police officer who who is confronting the individual. And and then there's some broad powers that will be given to park rangers, et cetera, or park people to to make sure that it's not overcrowded and that that the people that are in the park, enjoying the park are following the rules.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question now from Leanne Morejon with Local 10 News, who is watching us on Facebook Live. She says, I know the beach won't be open right away, but can you or the experts go into more detail about the rationale behind not allowing, say, a family unit, mom, dad and child, to go to the beach with chairs and snacks? Would similar use at a park, like an outdoor picnic with mom, dad and child with proper social distancing from others, be discouraged or not allowed?
No, picnics are not allowed in the parks order. Let me ask Maria. Maria, is that true? Picnic's aren't allowed, right?
Correct. No picnics allowed.
No, so there's no picnics allowed. You can you can go and you can, you know, enjoy the the park, but not not in a way that, not everything in a park will be allowed. Not the same things that were always allowed in a park are going to be allowed. Some things are are inherently risky, such as, you know, soccer match is not allowed. A football game is not allowed. Baseball, softball is not allowed. You may be able to do an individual activity, such as you can kick your own ball around if you're a soccer player. You can shoot baskets if you're a basketball player, but only with your own ball. And you can't, you can't play one on one or two on two, three on three or five on five. You can't do it. So you may be able to play horse because you can stay away from each other, but that's that's about it. And so tennis, that's why we had the discussion on tennis. You can't play doubles. And I know a lot of people play doubles, but that's too a little bit, you know, higher risk than playing singles. Singles are a very low risk activity because tennis players are usually far away from each other. And although they touch a ball, the the likelihood of transmission from that ball, that one ball, it's it's very, very slight. And so that's why, that's why we made those recommendations. They were pretty well thought out.
Leanne is following up, asking, what is the, but what is the rationale behind that? She says that's what she wants to know, for someone to explain what makes that riskier than some of the other things that may be phased in and phase one and two of the open spaces.
The the picnic aspect of it? It's just, you know, the picnic area, then you'll have more people getting around the picnic area. And then so you have, you know, it's a it's a number of people that are going to be around. And so, you know, we felt that that was not, that was one of the things that really, that's a risk not worth taking.
Okay, now we have Kristen Weaver, who is asking a question also, again, going back to the amenities about condo pools and parks. Please discuss residents' pools opening and marinas. If we can't have the beach to swim in the ocean, at least let us have access to our boats for fishing. I am also all for parks reopening since the kids will be out of school for nearly six months.
Yeah, we're trying to open up the the marinas and the boats. That's exactly what we're trying to do. So you can go fishing. That's exactly what we're trying to do, uh, so you can go fishing. Yeah, that's not a bad activity out there in the ocean. And, uh, as long as you only have a certain number of folks with you on your boat, depending on your, on your size, it's something that we think that you can do and do so in a safe manner and practice social distancing on the boat, uh, while you're on the boat, uh, is something I think you can do safely.
Again, another beach question. George on Twitter says, "Beaches and parks should be open ASAP, maintaining social distancing protocols such as only people from individual households being together, physical distancing, and possibly wearing PPE." That's a bad sun tanning.
On the beach, you're going to wear protective equipment on the beach? Kind of defeats the purpose of being on the beach. Uh, but, uh, you know, um, no. The problem with beaches is that it's an enforcement issue. Yes, we can have rules for the beaches, but we feel that at beaches, enforcing the rules in beaches is going to be much more difficult than enforcing the rules in a park, on the water, on a golf course. So we're gonna, that's the first three. And then if we ever figure out how to do the enforcement on the beaches, then, then yeah, but there aren't enough resources. It's such a long, uh, stretch that it's, and there's so many access points that it's really difficult to, to enforce that, uh, on the beaches.
Another media question. "The protests of people who want full reopening, these demonstrations that we're seeing across the country, throngs of people close together, many of them without masks, demanding the full reopening of their communities. A hazard for sure. What do you say about that? And how will Miami-Dade Police enforce anything like that if it does happen in our community?"
Well, there's, uh, it's, it's illegal to gather more than, um, more than ten people in one place. Uh, and so I don't know, if you have a gathering of two hundred people, that inherently is against the order. So you really can't have a gathering of ten, of two hundred people. You know, I understand the frustration, I do. And so, and I, and I, I understand why people are, are protesting and all, but, uh, we, um, we need to do this in a deliberate manner. And, um, in here, I believe that the vast majority of the people in Miami-Dade understand that, hey, we have, we have COVID-19 in our community. We've had a number of deaths. We've had over two hundred people die of COVID-19 here in our community. I have not seen a groundswell of people saying, "That's it, you know, open everything up." I think people want to, want to open up, but they want to open it up in a deliberate manner that safeguards themselves and, uh, and their families. And, uh, and so I've, uh, that's what I've seen right now. And, and a gathering of more than ten people is not allowed under the rules. So I don't think that's going to, well, I hope it doesn't happen. If it does happen, then they have to practice social distancing and they can't be gathering more than ten people.
We have a question now from a first responder, says, "Mayor Carlos Jimenez, with all due respect, a major portion of people in all of the county have proven they don't obey orders or rules that are set in place. As a first responder, I'm seeing this on a daily basis on the road, in stores, at house and apartment gatherings, boaters still getting out on the water, all this with all of these orders in place. To think that lifting some of these orders at this time with some rules in place is asking for trouble because as it is, the orders in place now are not being followed." Again, another enforcement question. Uh, obviously, there's a lot of concern about, you know, how are we going to slowly but surely go into the new normal with everybody trying to take that personal responsibility you've talked about so much?
Well, the, uh, I get a report every day from our police department and they do all kinds of inspections every day about enforcing the rules. And they say that the vast majority of people are actually complying with the rules. The boats that you see on the water today are not illegal. If they're, what they're, they are, they're the boaters that actually have a boat behind their home. And you can't close that. And you can't also shut off access to the water. That's not our purpose, alright? And so I can, I, I can shut off access to marinas and to lo, launching points, but if you have your boat behind your house, you can go out in the water. And that's exactly who he's seeing, alright? Nobody's leaving marinas. So it's kind of like, uh, you have two, two, uh, two different kinds of, of citizens, right? You have the, the privileged ones that live on the water and can get on the water anytime they want. Then the ones, you have the ones that have their boats either on marina or they have to take them to a launching point. Those folks are on the water, there's nothing illegal about it. As long as they don't raft, as long as they don't, uh, you know, congregate more than ten people, et cetera. And so what we've seen is those people that are on the water right now are actually following the rules, um, as written. And, uh, in terms of the, um, of the, uh, people breaking the rules, et cetera, yeah, people break the rules all the time, alright? They do. And so what we have to do is punish those that, that, uh, break the rules and then reward the ones that, that, uh, that don't break the rules. Um, and but because there are some that will refuse to follow the rules, doesn't mean that you're going to hamper the ability of everybody else, uh, to enjoy, you know, a park or the water, or maybe, you know, play around a golf, alright? And that's, and that's what we have to start focusing in on. Really fo, really focus in on enforcement, zero tolerance, and, uh, and that we're not getting around. Are some people going to get away? Yep, some people are going to get away. You can't let perfect be the enemy of good.
We have a question from Diana Perez on Facebook. She's asking if concessions inside parks will be allowed to operate.
Uh, there may be some concessions. Let's say if you, if you have, um, but we have to, uh, those are all rules that we have to write internally. Let's say you have, you know, concessions that rents kayaks or something like that. Well, if they want to operate, then they're going to have to disinfect after every use. Uh, what if you, uh, rent, uh, jet skis? Well, okay, after every use, you're going to have to disinfect the jet skis. Just like in a golf course, you're going to have to disinfect the, the, uh, the individual golf cart, uh, after every use and every, and the H push cart that's rented, they have to disinfect that. Um, the same thing could happen with, uh, will probably will happen with those concessionaires that rent something. Um, and so really, that's a case-by-case basis on what it is, what their business is.
In kind of that same vein about what's going to be open at, uh, parks, uh, we have Shannon Lee on on Facebook, asking, "If parks and beaches reopen, will public restrooms be open as well? And if so, how often will they be cleaned, sanitized, and stocked with proper supplies to avoid contamination? I know that's been talked about."
Yeah, we, we did. We talked about that. Uh, beaches are not clo, open, so don't worry about that. Uh, and so now we go to parks. And parks, there was a lot of discussion about this, about, uh, whether, whether restroom should be open or not. And our medical, uh, experts thought that they should be because it's actually more, uh, it's worse not to open them. And so, uh, we decided to open them. And then our parks director has been told that, hey, you need to make sure that they, they get cleaned a heck of a lot more than normal. We need to add resources to that in order to get that done. Um, there was actually even the discussion about people stealing toilet paper because apparently it's a commodity, right? Uh, and so we have to have toilet paper guards, you know, to make sure that nobody steals rolls of toilet paper. Um, but also have plenty of soap, uh, when we get it, the hand sanitizers, and then, um, the towels to be able to dry your hands, uh, and do that in a, in a safe manner. And then really keeping an eye on those bathrooms to make sure they're clean and that, uh, we have those kind of supplies. So yeah, they'll be open. The ba, the bathrooms will be open.
Princess Sicilian on Facebook says, "My elderly mother lives in a small condominium in which she wakes up every morning and does twenty laps around the building's lock pool that would, a lap pool, I think she meant, that was empty. Since you've restricted this, she's no longer been able to do her daily exercise that keeps her healthy and bolsters her immune system, which helps fight the virus. Wouldn't it be prudent to reopen restricted pool areas, especially given the increasing heat? Please don't treat the elderly like children," she says.
I try not to, but again, if you, if, it's not that one pool for that one person. This, we make, you know, the, the, we do for two point eight million people. And, um, and then what's the risk attached to opening up all these pools in all of these buildings? And, uh, and the risk, uh, unfortunately, right now, in turn, i- it's, it's not something that we're, we're going to do right now. Even though the pools themselves, if they're chlorinated, actually is fine because they kill the virus. Um, it's, uh, it's how, how many people are going to be around the pool. And we're not, we don't have police officers for every private pool or every condominium pool in, uh, in town. That, that can't be enforced, the social distancing aspect of it. And so we saw a lot of pictures of when these pools were open, that people were not following the rules. And so, um, you know, and, and we don't have the enforcement capability to do it.
We have another question that I know we've talked about. Mimi Rodriguez on Facebook asking, "Can we go fishing without a boat? We do fishing, but we have no boat."
Yes, and we talked about that also. And, uh, and so that's why, um, in part of the waterways recommendation, there is, uh, you can go fishing on a pier, say, or a, a bridge if it's open for, for fishing, as long as you stay ten feet apart, right, uh, right Rodney?
Yes, Mayor, that's what we recommend. Uh, the piers and the fishing, uh, will be allowed as long as you keep ten feet apart.
Very good. Okay, we have now, um, you know, again, talking about boat ramps. Uh, question from Jennifer, asking, "Is Miami-Dade opening boat ramps? And do you think it will be by this weekend?" Specific question from someone who's really ready to get back out there.
Not yet to, not, not ready to announce when, but the boat ramps, it's part of the, uh, it's part of the waterways and the, and the, the bay and the ocean boating aspect. Yeah, boat ramps will be open. But, but only, you know, there are certain ways to launch boats. It's not the free-for-all we've seen. It's going to be orderly and you got, and you got to get off by eight o'clock, alright? And so, yes, we expect a whole bunch of people want to, want to do that, but once those parking spots are open, I mean, are, are taken up, that's it. Uh, and it won't be, it won't, you won't be able to launch your boat as quickly as normal because we're only going to be doing it in a very orderly fashion. Make sure people say it's social distancing. Those that are going to be on one boat are going to kind of be segregated to that one boat. And, uh, and then when they get back, stay on the boat until you, uh, until, you know, you're, you're basically, uh, are coming out of the water, then you can get off and then go right into your car or cars and then you have to leave the facility. So it's not... Excuse me, my, uh, my tent's blowing away. Must be a lot of wind out there. Um, and so, um, the, um, yeah, this, my tent's about to fly away. Okay, uh, sorry, uh, but, um, it's, uh, I think I need to go out there and put it...
It is kind of windy today.
It is windy, okay. And so, uh, yeah, so it's, it's not going to be as smooth as normal. It's going to take a while to launch your boat. It's going to take a while to put it back. Um, and, uh, you can only have so many people on a boat. And we'll have people there at the launch site to make sure that that's also enforced.
Okay, I have a question on testing that has just arrived from Mickey Schneider. Can you address testing and if there will be more testing? That should really be the main concern here.
Yeah, they will, we'll continue to test in Miami-Dade. And we are going to expand testing in Miami-Dade. And I would hope that technology would allow us to have the more, the, the quick test, the, the, the blood test to, um, to, uh, to be able to make better decisions. Uh, but it's doubtful that we're going to have two point eight million tests anytime soon. So you have to assume that everybody has the virus. You have to maintain social distancing. You must change your behavior. That's what we have to do. And, uh, and people think that, well, okay, once we have testing, everything's going to change. Not really, because you can get tested right now and ten minutes later, you can get, you can get infected. Uh, and so you still must assume that everybody is infected. You have to take the measures to protect yourself and protect others. And that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, because this is, this is showing that even in outdoor spaces, you must do certain things. You cannot do everything that you did in the past. And that these are the things you can do that are safe, not a hundred percent, but, you know, the, the, the risk is low and that the risk of infection is low, um, even though it's not zero percent. And so those are the things that we have to do in order to get back to a kind of new normal. And then if you're, if you're, uh, you know, a senior citizen, you have to take, you know, um, certain precautions because this, uh, this virus is much more deadly to senior citizens than it is to younger folks, even though younger folks too are dying from, uh, from this virus.
Thank you, Mayor. Liz Perez now on Facebook is asking, in light of the, I talk about reopening certain things, "Could any of the infectious disease doctors comment on the rate of infection? Is it reducing? Have we plateaued? Is it going down?" She's, uh, concerned about that factor as we talk about the reopening.
Sure, I mean, uh, it's open to any of the, any of the doctors that are here.
It, it's really a very hard question to answer. This is, uh, I mean, Marty, it's a very challenging question because, uh, testing is still not where we want it to be. And, uh, the, the closest we can approximate is by looking at hospital admissions. And, and that's not a, that's not a surefire way either because, um, people aren't admitted on the, on the day they become infected. They, it, there's an incubation period and that's a variable length of time, right? So, um, what, what is absolutely clear is that the, uh, social distancing measures that the mayor has put in place have helped tremendously and that we have brought the slope down. In fact, the projections for the state of Florida have dropped, uh, the, the total projected number of deaths expected in Florida has dropped by over a thousand thanks to the measures that have been put in place. But, um, have we actually peaked? Probably not. And bear in mind that some of the types of testing that are being done, especially the, the blood test, the serology test, we're looking for IgGIGM, are not, um, are, you know, still have too many false positives and fa, false negatives to, to be too certain about those results. And, um, and, and there are still too many people that we are turning away in hospitals as even though they have symptoms that are compatible. So, uh, the answer's not in yet, but we're working on it. And the mayor is absolutely right. We're all gearing up, uh, in, not just in, in addition to having test sites, but actually having more equipment and doing more testing here locally so that we can get to that position that we actually are not blinded anymore by our lack of testing.
Thank you, Doctor. This question now from Larry Curbelo on Facebook says, "You mentioned that medical professionals are advising you that social distancing is necessary until a vaccine is found. However, MERS, similar to the coronavirus, does not yet have a vaccine for, a vaccine, and it has been in development for years. Thus, a vaccine for COVID-19 is not guaranteed in a year. Therefore, how feasible are these measures long-term?" Because he feels we do need to open as soon as possible. Mayor?
Can I, can I address that, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Hi, uh, hi. So that's a, that's a very interesting question, of course, not just for, for MERS, but we also tried to make a vaccine for SARS. And you're correct, we still don't have a vaccine for either one that is safe and effective. There are a lot of differences, though, in how these viruses behave. One thing is very, the closest to each other are SARS one and SARS two. SARS two being the virus that causes COVID-19. Uh, they're, they're most, they're the same species, they're just a different subspecies. And, but a big, big difference is that somebody who has, uh, who had SARS had a thousandfold less amount of virus to share in their, um, nasal and oral passages than people that have COVID-19. The people that have COVID-19 have so much more virus, a thousandfold more, that they're just that much more infectious. And, and that, and the shorter serial interval for, for COVID-19 is part of the reason that's driving this thing at such astronomical numbers. Um, in terms of being able to create a vaccine, you are absolutely right. This is extremely challenging. We have better technology today, uh, although you're right, we're still trying to make a vaccine for MERS. There are other ways to control this. And, uh, another thing that we're looking at besides vaccines is to come up with a pre or post-exposure, uh, pill, an antiviral that can keep us from being, from sharing virus or from showing disease, which is not the same as a vaccine because it doesn't educate your system, but it's something that could be taken in a community. And if, and if it's effective the way we think it will be, it would have the same effect of basically having an entire community where the virus has nowhere to go. So there's a lot of approaches that we're looking at. We're not there yet. Vaccine's not the only way to get rid of this virus. And these public health measures did work when we didn't have a vaccine and we didn't have an antiviral. When I was out there for the Ebola outbreak, uh, we used public health measures. The one thing we're not doing that we did do for Ebola, and that is to do the contact tracing and testing of every single contact and then isolate every single positive case from everybody else, with the exception, obviously, if it's a child or someone who cannot take care of themselves, then obviously someone has to care for that individual. But that part of the, the, the public health puzzle, if we could add that to our system, we could much more quickly get rid of this virus and bring the reproductive number below one, which is what we need to do if we want to have our society completely back to normal, get the reproductive number below one.
Thank you, Doctor. We have a question now that, uh, will be for the golf experts. Uh, this is from John Bautista. He first thanks you, Mayor, for allowing the public this opportunity for this town hall. He said... He says, I'm a member of a local golf club and we normally play 25 to 30 players on a Saturday. Any restrictions to the amount of people that will be allowed on the golf course at any given time? What about the 19th hole allowed to open?
No, the 19th hole will not, will not be open. That's like a restaurant, so no, will not be open, only for takeout. And the number of folks that can go on the golf course, it's foursomes. I mean, that's, you got to force them and then you got to force them behind and that's the way it is. But you will, usually a foursome takes two electric golf carts. Of course, and now if you, if none of them are walking, it's four carts. So just by that, probably you'll have fewer golfers out because the, or you'll be forced to walk. That's, that's going to be the key. And if you're forced to walk, you know, the, the rate of play is going to be a little, little slower. So I don't know, Charlie, you guys, you got any of the comments?
I'd be more, I'd be, sir, yeah. It's, it's going to be a limit because most golf courses on an 18-hole facility keep 72 carts, somewhere between 72 and 100. So we believe we'll be down close to 25 to 30% on rounds on average. Plus, we believe that the spacing is going to be a little bit different. That's already been talked to by a lot of the people in the, in the different areas. Instead of having seven minute or eight minute intervals, most people are going to 10 already to make sure the spacing is there. It, it, it's going to be limited by the amount of carts, the amount of walkers. So there'll definitely be a lot less people on the golf course than a normal 130 people stacked up.
Thank you very much. Mayor, we have a question from Anna Carvel from Channel 51. She is asking if you are going to wait until numbers are flattening or going down before making a decision on moving into this phase one of open spaces?
I'm going to talk to my medical personnel to see when the right time is. And the problem that we have is that the, the case number, number of new cases, if it's, we call it positives, it's really not indicative of what's going on because there's, because a, only a certain percentage of the people are being tested. We don't really know how many people in this town have, have been exposed. I can tell you that I think that a heck of a lot more have been. And so we need to look at the hospitalizations. We want to make sure, we want to look at the, what, what's really going on in, in town, what's happening before we, we make that move. But again, if we think that the things that we're doing and the way that we're doing it is safe, inherently safe, then, you know, I'll ask, if it's inherently safe, then why not? Okay? And so that's, that's also a question that I'm going to ask because everything that we put out, I think, is inherently safe, or else we wouldn't be putting it out. And so if it's inherently safe, then what, what is it that, you know, we're waiting for? And there are some things we probably did that, if you did it the right way, it's inherently safe. Look, we still got grocery stores are open. We still have pharmacies are open. We still have a lot of things that are still open, right? And, and, and so probably some of those things may not be as safe as what we're a, asking to do now, all right? Because everything we're asking now is outdoors, okay? And not indoors. There's some stuff happening indoors today. And so, you know, we've got to take that into consideration. I'll talk, I'll talk to my medical folks and then really ask my question.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Iman El Shaawi with the Miami Times asking, isn't the possibility of jail time for public social distance violations counterproductive of the state attorney's initiative for decarceration and limited arrests for low-level offenses? What would constitute being fined versus being arrested?
I guess it's up to the individual and, and how badly they are violating something. But again, you know, look, a lot of it has to do with, with a message that we are serious about this and we are serious about this. And so, you know, most would not end up there, but if somebody takes it to an extreme, they may very well end up behind jail, all right? And so I'm not, I'm not ruling out that possibility. If I ruled out that possibility, then, you know, you're, you're ruling out a, a consequence to bad behavior and I'm not going to rule out any consequence to bad behavior.
Mayor, we have a question from Rose Haney on Facebook. She's asking if you could open the Crandon Park Beach just for walkers and bikers, not necessarily the parking lot for beachgoers?
No.
Okay, oh, there's your answer. Okay, Mayor, that's going to be our final question. We are going to wrap up. So if there's any final thoughts that you'd like to share with the residents of the county?
Well, we'd, again, thank you all for participating. It was a lively discussion and there were great questions. And I think, and also want to thank all the, the panel members for your participation and for your input. And I think that the recommendations were very thoughtful and, and something that we can incorporate and they're something that is enforceable. And so I plan to have another meeting with some, some of the experts and say, okay, what's the timing of this? How soon can we do this? When would you recommend it? Or at least say, hey, there's, there's really no great risk in doing this. And so that's the, that's the next step. And, and so we'll keep everybody informed as to the timing of this. And, and hopefully for me, to be honest with you, I'd rather have it sooner than later, all right? We need to, we need to move forward on this. Need to move forward on this. Next step also is we're going to convene the same kind of a group for interior spaces, businesses, et cetera. And that's going to take a little bit, a lot more time than, than this particular group. This is, this was difficult, but not exceedingly difficult because it is outdoor spaces. Indoor spaces are going to be a little bit more difficult. But as I said before, I've been named to the governor's task force on reopening Florida. There's no timetable there either, but the work has to be done by April 24th. And the recommendations have to be given to the governor. So I would expect that also our recommendations for all of those topics that the governor is looking for will be done before the 24th of May. And when the implementation time is, again, that's up to the medical, the medical experts to, to guide us in that decision. So without further ado, that's, thank you for it very much for joining us. Thank you all panelists. Thank you, thank you experts, and, and we'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership.
Thanks, everybody, for all the information. Thanks to the doctors for your time. It's been fantastic.
Yes.
Yes.